I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Meeting to Order on January 18th, 2022. And I'm going to start with a roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Burgess?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone. And we also have not only people in the audience, but we have some individuals on Zoom. So welcome to you all as well. If you should have any issues, please raise your hand and let us know if you can't hear us, and we'll try to get that resolved. But want to welcome everyone. And yesterday was Dr. King's Day, and so I hope people had the opportunity to stop and commemorate the man with the dream that we are now still pursuing as a country. And we're going to start with item number one, which is a special presentation, or item number two, which is a special presentation to A is a COVID update from Johnson County Public Health, Sam Jarvis, who is the Community Health Division Manager. Welcome.
Good evening to the Iowa City Council. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to provide updates. Certainly wish we could state that we're seeing a decrease in cases, but we are still seeing a pretty significant level of transmission. I know the staff had mentioned earlier this week, or this morning in our COVID update internally, that over the past seven days, we've seen roughly about 2,800 cases. And so to put that in comparison or context, at one point in time, near the end of summer, we were showing concern when we had 400 cases within a seven-day reporting period and starting to creep into high transmission. And now we are really beyond that point. And so ourselves, much like the rest of the state and other parts of the nation, are seeing that Omicron surge right now. So what are we looking to do about that? As always, we are continuing to promote and strongly encourage everyone get vaccinated and boosted. And to clarify in the language that many have probably noticed the CDC posture and state is to be up to date, which includes to be fully vaccinated, but get that booster shot when you're eligible, which now for mRNA vaccines, or Pfizer and Moderna, that's five months after your primary series. And so we continue to do our best to clarify that information because we know within the past several weeks, much has changed, and quite quickly, given the speed that we've seen this increase in cases. So our staff are available to answer those questions throughout the day. We are continuing to update our communication pieces and guidance out to the community and other work groups that we've stood up with different sectors, whether it's our schools and daycares and others. So we'll continue to push that information out as best as possible because we know that it's not that always that folks are operating off of misinformation or even the wrong information, but it might be just out of date. And so we want to continue to stress that clarification. And then certainly, and what's probably at top of mind, is the recent communication we've seen from the CDC about masks. And above all, we still want to stress that any mask is better than no mask, especially when we're talking about indoor spaces and community transmission, but that it's really about fit, protection, and comfort. Because many may want to opt into something that's most protective, but if it's too uncomfortable that you don't wear it right, you may be erring on that set of caution, but not wearing it correctly. So again, you know, other examples are that medical or surgical masks may not fit as appropriate as for some. There may be gaps around the side. So we do want to emphasize that fit and comfort are also things to consider when selecting a mask for yourself. Now, the thing with that, when we're looking at folks moving to or moving away from cloth masks, things that can be laundered, is the time to wear or the length of time and reuse of surgical or N95s. And so we've not received clear guidance from our state or federal partners, but again, if it's soiled or damaged, it's time to replace it. So we'll just continue to ask folks to be thoughtful and think about those things. Certainly, we know that whether one wears makeup on the inside, it can be it can come off on the inside of the mask, or if depending on what you're doing, if you're cooking over a stove or things like that, it can be soiled or laden with oil particles or other things like that. So as always, if it looks like it's soiled or dirty, it might be time to replace that. And as always, we'll continue to promote other layers of mitigation, which are things like physical distancing and staying home when you're ill. And to that point, in regards of testing, again, appreciate the support from all of our community partners and libraries to support the Test Iowa at Home program. We've got good geographic access, but we know that right now that there's been some of a strain on testing capacity because of the high demand, which we're happy to see. We're glad that folks are getting tested when either exposed or symptomatic, or just wanting to know whether or not, if they're ill. And so we continue to provide guidance on testing and do our best to meet access as best as possible. But with that, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Sam. What can you tell us about the drive-through testing sites that I've heard about at Liberty High School? I don't know if there's a second one?
Yeah, absolutely. So to our knowledge, the Nomi Health System, it sounds like it has several test sites across the state, and they'll be or have set up one in North Liberty. And so they are operating independently and in partnership with other entities. I believe Iowa City School District, Des Moines School District, and Polk County have set up sites. We believe that there is intention to set up sites across other places, but at the moment, we only know of the one that stood up here. So again, we appreciate the support of testing capacity. We believe that they're in contact with the State Health Department so that the tests that they are taking are reported through the state surveillance system. So happy to see access continue to increase.
Well, thank you so much for all that you all are doing. I know that with the numbers going up, what would be the best place for an individual just to go to get information if they suspect they have COVID or in trying to figure out the new guidance?
We absolutely want them to contact us. They can reach us at the office. We have staff available, happy to walk through their specific scenario. Because we know now that, and as many are aware, that we've suspended investigations and contact tracing for individual cases, we're happy to provide that information and guidance and walk through one specific scenario. So they can reach us at the main line at the department, 319-356-6040, and ask to speak to a disease prevention specialist. And we've certainly repurposed our contact tracing team to also be available throughout the day to help us with that call volume. So we're absolutely happy to walk through the scenarios.
But Sam, with students coming back in town now, presumably they've been other places where Omicron is all over the country, do we have any sense of, without having a crystal ball, when Omicron is likely to peak and start heading down around here?
That's a great question. To my knowledge, there's no good modeling. And actually, to note today, the state head made an announcement that it sounds like the CDC had modeling available on their site and have recently taken that down because Omicron is just far outpacing what modeling can do. And so it is a bit unknown at this point. But going forward, you know, as we continue to see this increase in cases, we are really stressing all the different things and tools that we have and knowledge so that we can curb transmission as best as possible. But I apologize, right, a lot right now is somewhat unknown.
Thanks.
Great.
Sam, I really appreciate it. On your website, the Johnson County Public Health website, looks like it had been recently revamped that had three big buttons about what to do if you test positive, or you think you have COVID, or if someone in your household had COVID. But that repurposing or the updating of that information was really helpful. So I hope folks will check that out, too.
Thank you. I'll be sure to pass that along to staff. You know, certainly, the decision to suspend tracing investigations was extremely difficult, but we wanted to repurpose the site so that as soon as folks were there in the landing page, as you noted, that they would have that guidance directly for their situation as best as possible. So it is, staff did a wonderful job to redesign that for high volume, to be able to address those specific scenarios. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And I do see a hand raised. I asked that hands be raised on Zoom if there was an issue. So, oh, maybe there wasn't. The hand is removed. We'll continue. But if there is any issues, please raise your hand, and I'll just confirm that there is an issue. We are on to items number three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second, Taylor.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If you are on Zoom, there's a button at the bottom for you to raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. And if you're in present here, I ask that you come to the mic. There is a sign-in on the side table over there that you need to do at some point. Seeing, would anyone like to speak? Welcome. And everyone also gets three minutes. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Noah, live in Iowa City. I'm here to, we've got a couple items on the consent agenda today. One was about the Police Review Board's minutes about the meeting where they discussed, where they somehow found that ICPD was not in violation of using excessive force when they gassed tier, wow, flashbang, grenade, whatever you want to call it, and OC sprayed hundreds of us that were standing in the middle of the road for, and had acts that violate the Geneva Convention. War crimes are committed against people who were peacefully standing in the street. And the CPRP, the review board showed how useless, how ineffective they are, when they can't even find acts of war, excessive force. That is obscene. That's disgusting. And it's wrong. Like, that's, there's, there's no excuse. There is, that tier gassing at night was wrong. Yet this council has done nothing to rein in its cops since then. It's done nothing to change the culture. And then when those cops talk about, on video, you hear them saying, oh, let me gas, saying, just so proud of how they were gassing us. Bunch of them, a whole bunch of different agencies. And yet this council won't do anything to rein in those cops. Give them millions and millions and millions of dollars a year, but not like, when people need housing, the city doesn't do anything for it. When there's extreme weather events coming, the city doesn't, you look away all you want, but like, these are the facts. When there is adverse weather event coming, you all ignored me. You, other people who demanded shelter for those people, did nothing about it. But yet you can fund these cops millions and millions of dollars, but you can't do, provide the most basic safety to people who need shelter. One of the like, three basic things every community needs is shelter. Everyone needs that, and the city can't even do that. But they can fund millions to this force that will gas people if they stand up to police brutality. Well, I apologize, not just police brutality, but yeah, do something about that. Actually invest in the people of the city instead of the cops who are violent and will gas us when they please.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address any item on the consent agenda? Seeing no one in the present or online, I am going to have council discussion at this point. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We are on to item number nine, which is community comment. These are items people want to address that are not on the agenda. Speakers will be provided three minutes to speak. And I will, I see some hands raised online. And if you're present and you want to speak, I ask that you step to the side, and there's a note card to sign up, and then step to the mic, and I'll call upon you. We're going to go online to Amel Ali. Welcome.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
All right. First and foremost, I just wanted to extend gratitude to you all for allowing a hybrid forum for these meetings, because it allows me a chance to formally give you an invite to a TRC meeting that I reached out to you, a few of you guys about a couple of weeks ago, regarding Ron Wakabayashi, where he would be presenting. And unfortunately, due to COVID and inclement weather, we decided to cancel our meeting. So I'm here to formally invite you guys again to this Thursday's meeting at 7:00 PM. And you have the option to join via Zoom as well. And just to give you a little bit of background, Ron was the National Director of the Japanese American Citizens League that made the redress campaign their priority. In 1988, President Reagan signed legislation HR442 that issued a formal apology and monetary compensation for any living survivor of the wrongful incarceration. And I think that it's just a really great opportunity to hear from someone who's involved in a truth and reconciliation process. There's a lot that we could all learn. Secondly, I just wanted to make one comment regarding the joint entities meeting, and this kind of ties to the first presentation that was given about COVID update. I think it would be really interesting to pose the question to everyone about adequate masks and supplying adequate masks to the community, and especially those who are the most vulnerable to catching COVID, like supplying better masks to schools, supplying better masks to public libraries, and things like that. See how you guys can work together and put your money together to give people just a little bit more peace with everything that's going on, because there are so many unknowns with this variant. And frankly, I'm not at the place where I think it's going to go any better from here right now. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you. Nicholas, welcome.
Hello. Sorry. Good evening, council. I guess it is evening now. Oh, jeez. Okay. I thought I only had 16 seconds there for a second. First off, I wanted to, like Amel, I wanted to thank you all for giving a hybrid option for these meetings. I'm in a similar situation where, given my childcare responsibilities, I would not be able to attend these meetings in any capacity other than to watch them online. So I do, in fact, appreciate that, despite I'm, despite regularly criticizing you all for the things you do. And with that in mind, I would also like to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for advocating for, like, thinking a lot more systemically about childcare needs in the county. And I don't think it's inappropriate at all to try and bring these things up in joint entities meetings. We do need to be thinking more broadly about these issues, because frankly, childcare is a huge hassle, as I and many others know. But the thing that I wanted to speak most specifically on was in reference to something that Counselor Thomas said during the work session about thinking more systemically with regards to sort of the interrelation between transit, housing, basically, a whole host of issues, because this council historically has had a very real problem of looking at any individual item on, say, a given council agenda and thinking about solely that item. This is a huge bugaboo for me. I have addressed you all, although in a different composition, before on precisely this issue. I believe it was in regards to the first consideration for the IWV Road project, that this council has said many times in the past that you need to think more systemically about how you're doing development, like what long-term planning needs are and so forth. And yet, when it comes time to actually make decisions about individual projects, that sort of systemic thinking kind of flies out the window. And I want to push back on something that actually the mayor said, because you can't shunt these issues exclusively to these strategic planning meetings, because we've seen what results if you do that, where then you make a determination on a completely ad hoc basis, whether or not, you know, given project conforms to X or Y plan, and then that's it. There's no sense of, you know, needing to do outreach or sort of like actively soliciting projects, or sort of when you're actually looking at a given project, thinking about, say, the negative ramifications it might have for other goals that you have. And so I really want to applaud Counselor Thomas, and I think you should all listen to him and really take to heart what he has said, because what he is advocating for and what he wants you all to do is really what the city should have been doing 10 years ago. Because if you had, maybe we wouldn't be in the housing crisis that we have right now. And so, like I said, I just wanted to put a button on that. Again, thank the Mayor Pro Tem for his statements earlier, and thank you all for hybrid meetings. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd see no other hands online. Anyone in the public? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Noah. Yes. Sorry. Yes. Last meeting, well, last, the first work session this year, I had to sit through the meeting where y'all were talking about making up new rules or whatever. And I will first of all say, I'm glad that most of you are against arresting me and others who come up and to speak. I guess, thank you for that, for not wanting people who use their voice to be arrested. Thank you. So there's that. But to set the record straight, the disruptions that have occurred at this meeting, past meetings, have been me and others coming up here to talk about, I am talking about to have hybrid meetings, so people have the rest of their lives to come here, which I'm glad we finally have. I'm not going to thank y'all, because you should have done that months ago, but glad it's happening finally now that we have meetings. But yes, demanding housing and accessibility will never, cannot begin to their disruptions to like, that's not a disruption. If you think that's disruptive, that me saying you need to provide housing for people is disruptive, you need to search in your own heart and think what's wrong with it. You could think of like that somehow, like something that could be wrong. There's absolutely nothing wrong with people demanding housing for people who need it. I have friends who lives are literally at risk. That last, the last meeting of 2021, when there was the winter break show that we very luckily nicely did not get badly affected by. Now, further west, they got in Nebraska and Des Moines, and they, you could, they got a lot worse. We just got lucky that we didn't actually get it bad in the city. My friends' lives were literally at stake, and I spoke over time, oh, no. The city did nothing to protect them. And you should, and there's, still have been done anything. There's no emergency plan for housing people. No one, I've emailed you all about that. No one emailed me back about if the city has a plan for when there's adverse events happening, for giving shelter to people when there's no shelter. Also, some other severe problems. The shelter house, the, even though the winter shelter is finally open, is terrible outreach. I, when I was doing lunches to housespeople, I talked to four housespeople literally five minutes away from where the, from the winter shelter, and all four of them told me they didn't even know when their shelter was open. This was like a week after. No, I think it was more than a week after. It was last Thursday that I talked to them, and they, none of, four people, none of them knew that the winter shelter was open. There's lots going on.
Thank you.
Can you fix that?
Thank you. Online, I see Taylor, followed by Dan. Welcome, Taylor.
Yeah, hi. My name is Taylor Cohn. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to organize my thoughts. So sorry if this is a little shuffle, but I just wanted to back up everything the other commenters have said so far. And I hope you really appreciate that people are talking to you and are telling you what it's like to actually live in this community outside of your own experience. That's really crucial to the work you're doing, and you should value it a lot. And you shouldn't be trying to put punitive, you know, things in place in case they do it in a way that makes you feel bad or makes you have to stay here longer. So I would urge you, when you're thinking about, like, meeting protocols or something, to not have any kind of consequences for people not being germane or whatever. That's just not, this should not be a priority to you. And I would especially caution you to stay away from imitating the City of Des Moines in that respect. That is a very bad idea. They're committing like First Amendment violations over there. You should not be looking at them as a model. You should not be using violence in any way against your constituents. And I also wanted to address the winter shelter. I'm so, so glad that that became a priority a couple of weeks ago and was open. But why was it not a priority before then? This is not any kind of attack on the organization that, that you, you know, contract with or whatever it is you do. The fact of the matter is that they were not able to pull this off, and your constituents suffered. Your unhoused residents suffered. And there was a long time where it was, you know, maybe a warm December for you, where you, you know, can go inside your home, but to sleep in outside, why was, why was there no shelter? Why didn't, why didn't someone say, oh, my gosh, 911, we need to open one of our many public buildings to have an emergency space so that people are not in the cold? Why is there no, like, it's not that difficult to have something in place that's redundant, even if it's just on an ad hoc basis. Like, there's, if the winter shelter is not open, it should have been everyone's priority to drop everything and get that open. And it's not a matter of pointing fingers at whose fault it is. It's just the simple fact that the city government is supposed to provide basic services so the residents can survive, and that didn't happen this year. So now that the shelter is open and people have a place to go, can you, can you please think about how you can make sure this never happens again? Never? And I know two of you are new. Welcome. Can you prioritize this in your time, as you're figuring out what you're gonna, what you're gonna do on this council? Can we make sure this never happens again, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Dan.
Hi. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So, good evening, council. And I would like to start by saying thank you for having hybrid meetings. I'm in quarantine at the moment because America can be dumb, but I guess that's where we're at. So I would like to comment about meeting protocols. I just have something quick I would like to say to council and Mr. Mayor, Counselor Weiner, Mayor Pro Tem, all the people who are working on coming up with the city's response to these, to new protocols. Please just consider tactics of de-escalation or just the way, I mean, because it seems like the city and Mr. Mayor, it's zero to 100. I mean, there's, there's something, there's definite alternatives between just saying, hey, can you please stop talking to, hey, we're going to arrest you. So I would just like to have you all keep that in mind. And I would also like to comment about the joint entities meeting. I think that because with the issue of the MRAP and armored vehicles, I think that might be a good discussion with the county to have about their usage of the MRAP at that time. I would also like to say that I think there should probably be a council work session regarding armored vehicles, because the Iowa City Police Department has been using the Boylan County Bearcat. And I don't know if, what the details are about that, if we're giving money to the Lynn County Sheriff's Department for the usage, or what that, what that looks like, but like, that's pretty concerning. And I think that council deserves answers to that, and just know what's going on, and the public does. And I think now is the time, the ball is in the court of the city, for you all to make a definite judgment about armored vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else on Zoom would like to speak? Welcome. I'll have you speak first, and then when you're done, there's a sign-in. But you can speak now. I'll have you come speak.
Sure.
And then after you're done, you can sign in.
Okay.
Welcome. Please state your name and what city you're from.
My name's Dave Moore, and I'm from Iowa City. If, let me ask you, it's three minutes. If I, if my reading glasses fog up, can I lower this slightly, or do you want me to keep it up?
You're, you're fine to take it off as long as people are six feet away from you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and rest of council. I want to talk about the mill for a minute, and I don't want to be perceived as somebody who's who's pursuing, pursuing loss causes of trivial matters. This may be a narrow path to putting the actual mill location back on our plates again as a community asset, but it's certainly not a trivial matter. I want to just explain, and I'm sure most of you know about this, but that if the mayor, unilaterally, Mr. Teague, or maybe possibly it's Constable, if you were to put this, if you were to call a special, special meeting this week, and I guess it would have to be this week because I think the demo was scheduled for Monday, just a week from today, or yesterday, if you were to put a special meeting, if you were to hold one, to consider whether this, the mill has historic status, then four out of city, seven city consulars could decide, if they did agree with that, that they would send this, that they would declare a hub, a, a public hearing sometime. That's the process, I think. You call a special meeting, and then you do a four out of, you have a discussion, do a four out of seven vote as to whether to have a public hearing as to the status of the mill. And that in itself, this week, I believe, would put the demolition on hold for 60 days. So I'm, I'm just urging you to consider this sort of out of the box thing. And this is, my notes are just from an email that I sent to a friend when he asked me what's going on with the mill today, so if they're a little scattered, that's okay. This building, you know, that has given so much, I'm gonna go fast because I don't know where my three minutes are here, you know?
It's over there.
Okay. This is like in a wrestling match or something is what it reminds me of. But I'm not here to wrestle. Okay? Okay, so the building that has given so much to so many is, is, is kind of going down without so much as a whimper, except if you look at social media, you'll see whether it's Little Village or any other website, that people are hurting deeply about this, hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of people all over the country, and especially here, they're really hurting. I think someone said it best that they thought that everybody thought somebody else was taking care of this, and COVID, of course, contributed to that.
Thank you.
Was that three minutes?
Yes.
Jesus.
Yep, thank you, though.
God, I haven't even started. Can I come back after, after?
No, no. Yep.
Well, I thought the 42 seconds was, I was 42 seconds in.
No, it was, it was three minutes given.
Oh, okay.
So the person behind you can come forth at this point.
Mr. Teague, can I, can I go an extra minute? Is that possible with so little?
No.
I'd like to tell you the reasons why, if possible.
No.
Okay.
But thank you, though. Well, I'll have the person behind you come. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Chris Carmen, and I, resident of Iowa City, and I'm also here to speak about the mill. And sort of to echo something Dave said, this is not an effort, effort to, to villainize anyone, including the developer, but just thinking about the historic, historic significance of the mill, certainly as a cultural asset and, and resource in our community for 60 years, first in one location in the downtown, and then 50 years in the current location. And it's, and to me, it's an example of living history. It's not something that happened 100 years ago, but it's something that if you were to take a poll of Iowa City residents, I think probably, you know, a, a large number would havoc an emotional and social connection with the mill, whether they went there to hear a politician speak who's running for, for president, or to be part of some sort of organization that was meeting there, or to, you know, to hear Dave Moore, or Greg Brown, or any, you know, anyone else in our rich musical culture here. And so, you know, I, I know that it, that it's a challenge to think about doing something at this point, but at very least, I'd, I'd say that it's, it's worth giving local citizens a chance to, to have some input, to, you know, to go through a process, process of historic review, and then, you know, for an objective body to weigh the pros and cons. But, but, but I think that it would be, it would be a, an act of, of paying attention to, to the concerns of local citizens. And at very least, I'd, I'd encourage the, the council to, to think about the mill as an object lesson, even if nothing can reverse what's already in process now. How, how is a community, do we, to be preserved, these, these pockets of, these important pockets of culture, especially when, when it's a, a private business that has, you know, significant community benefit? You know, and so there are special considerations, I think, in, in these situations, but it's well worth, you know, before we lose all this sort of grassroots culture that's, you know, that is very much part of the fabric of Iowa City, is there some sort of process for stepping back and saying, you know, these in, these are, maybe there's a definition for what this cultural historic significance is and how it can be preserved?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address an item that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one. We're on to item number 10, which is planning and zoning matters. Item number 10A is rezoning IWV Road Southwest. An ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 53.36 acres from county agricultural to intensive commercial, approximately 17.03 acres from county agricultural to interim development commercial, and approximately nine acres from rural residential to intensive commercial for land located west of the intersection of IWV Road Southwest and Slothhour Road. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second alter.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in public, please step to the mic. Welcome.
Thank you. John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the applicant. I'd just like to take a quick moment to thank council, the members that have participated in the past discussions to consider this matter, and I'm available for any other questions. I understand there's two new council members, and I'm available for any questions if there are any from those members.
Thank you. Anyone online? I see no hands. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 11, we're gonna have Counselor Burgess recruise herself. Item number 11 is proposed South District self-supported municipal improvement district. This is an ordinance amending Title III Finance, Taxation, and Fees of the City Code to add a new chapter to establish the South District self-supported municipal improvement district pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 386 Code of Iowa and provided for the establishment of an operation fund and levy of an annual tax in connection therewith. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second, Thomas.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Thomas. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Please step up to the mic if you're in the, if you're here in person, and we have a hand raised on, on Zoom. Welcome, Nicholas.
Hello again, council. I haven't had a chance to address this issue when it has been on council agenda in the past due to lack of hybrid meetings, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not gonna rehash that issue. I did get a chance recently to speak to a couple of the organizers responsible for putting the SMID, and, okay, actually, can I, this, this is gonna sound really silly, but I do have to get it off my chest. There's no H in SMID. Can we please not say Schmid? Sounds very strange to me. Maybe that's just a petty thing, but whatever. Anyway, I had a chance to talk to some organizers who worked on the proposal, and I was actually really impressed by the differences between this proposal and the, the downtown district that it's modeled on. But the thing is, a lot of what happened with the downtown district, and also the effects that all of those sort of like development priorities had on the near areas around downtown, especially with regards to housing, the businesses that left, and also the transformations of the ped mall from what used to be sort of like, you know, a commons for a lot of people who, you know, live in the city into the, I guess you could say, resort that it is now. I was impressed by the fact that the, the organizers themselves are really sort of conscientious about involving residents in the planning process. But the reason why I'm addressing you all about this is because a lot of what happened with the downtown district was at the behest of the city. And I know when it comes to sort of the, the gentrification effects that could possibly result, not just with the, the South District SMID, but also the sort of the, the larger sort of form-based code issue in the South District, and also the way in which the city clearly wants to gentrify that part of town, I think it's really important to honor the, the wishes and the desires of the people who put this proposal together, that the city actually stand out of the way of that, and also to, how should I put this? Not impose upon Angie Jordan and the others sort of an impossible situation in which they have to sort of advocate for the existence of this improvement district, while at the same time also implicitly advocating for the sort of the gentrification effects that the city certainly wants to have on the south side. And so that is all on you to be extremely conscientious about that and not to impose upon that part of town, which has historically been very socio-economically diverse, a, well, what's already happening? It's becoming much more, it's becoming much richer, it's becoming much whiter, and if you don't think very conscientiously about how those effects happen and how the city is complicit in them, then I have a feeling that it's going to go the same way of sort of the, the so-called core neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Levin. I have commented on this previously, so I'm just gonna say a couple of things very quickly. One is that I'd like to clarify that the organizers and the residents of the South District SMID are the same people. This SMID came from the residents and from the current business owners, and those are the people driving it, those are the people working on it week to week, those are the people working behind the scenes to make sure that it's successful. And really, that's all I have to say today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Noah. And I'll have to say is, practically 99.99% of the time, capital, business owners, such as there's lots of capital acts contrary to interests of the residents. So, I mean, that's, anyways. So, yeah, this city, as I've said, previous meetings needs to, if they're going to have this, have guidelines to control their cops so the cops don't do what they do when you gentrify, just push out the people, finally, especially the houseless folks, because it's already happening on the south side, it's happened more and more of this. So, control your cops. Order them to stop having, to, from harassing the houseless people, folks. Oh, yes, also, pass an ordinance to prohibit Iowa City cops from driving an MRAP around in the south side, or any side, anywhere, like, no, no ICPD cops driving any military vehicles. Ban that. You can do that. Do it. Last year, you all talked about how you were against militarized police, yet we still have militarized police. They still use their military, military vehicles. They use, they had, they used, they had their military vehicle that night when they committed war crimes against your residents, the residents of the city. The MRAP was there when that happened, which would make sense that weapon of war would be there when they're committing war crimes, but you also do something about that. So you have a lot, you have a bit of control over what, how you control your cops. Obviously, there's just state law stuff that just makes it harder for stuff, but stuff like that, you can very easily control what equipment they use. They don't need an MRAP. They don't need Bearcat. They don't need any of that. They don't need to be using any of that, and you should ban them from using any of Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Council discussion.
Just want to underscore what Ms. Levin said, that it seemed, it's been a, and I think you, Mayor Pro Tem, know, know this because you're probably part of it, this has truly been an effort of the residents to put this together and push it forward, and I'm really happy to see it come to fruition.
I would just like to add and commend Angie Jordan, and Eleanor, and Tasha Laird, and a number of other resident organizers who actually worked very hard and went back to businesses and nonprofits who are also signed on to do this. It is very true that any SMID that is created is created by those who are in the area. But there was initially quite a bit of resistance by property owners who did not want to buy into this. Once persistence and explanation and education occurred that this can be something that is eminently shapeable by the, by the people who live there and own property there, then you really started to see a slow change in people buying into it, and this is entirely due to the persistence of the residents in that area and who very much want to strengthen and fortify the neighborhood and the area while still retaining its own character. And I just think that it's a real boon to the area.
I'm super excited to have this be on our agenda tonight as the pass and adopt, and I'm not gonna repeat all the thank you, thank yous, but the South District Neighborhood Association and individuals within the South District has really been impressive in so many facets, and, and this is just one way of the community coming together and actually creating an avenue through conversation and relationship building to be here with this proposal today. So happy to vote in favor of it. If no more comments, roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed, a six to zero with one recruzo. All right, and we are on to item number 12, which is CPRB Expand Membership. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter VIII, entitled Community Police Review Board, to increase the composition of the board from five members to seven members. This is second consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step to the mic or raise your hand online. And I'll have you come forth first, and then you can sign in once you're done.
Okay, cool. I'm Bridget. I just want to address like what the cops are doing specifically about like sexual assault victims. Personally, I submitted mine in October, and I followed up with it multiple times, and they haven't contacted me, and they kept saying four to six weeks. But again, like I submitted mine in October, so just like, it's definitely a good thing for closure, so just wondering if you could look into that, like, they're just, their process, like, not just for me, but just like for everyone and my parents, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone online in the public? Welcome.
Hello. So, yeah, just pretty much as I said last time, instead of have it, so no former cops ever on the police review, review board since cops, former cops are, of course, going to find their fellow cops, cop folks that, that they didn't commit offenses. I mean, that's, that's how it goes. We all know this, are aware of how it works when cops or former cops it goes, we all know this, are aware of how it works when cops or former cops investigate current cops, and of course, they're not going to find any wrongdoing with them. The overwhelming majority of the time, that's why this review board never does anything regardless, I think like even more, like cop supporting folks on there is going to do anything to change it, and this board just, they couldn't even condemn war crimes. And you think you need to have more cops, more supportive cops on this board, it's supposed to be ruining the cops? It's asinine to me. Also, just thinking a little more about the police problem, and having, having, currently the first response to mental health crisis is to send cops and then possibly have the mental health after, so still have first responders, be cops, mental health crisis is absolutely terrible, 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 terrible way to do things, that's how you get people killed. Someone as, who has luckily not had the cops show up many times in my life, and I've had more than my fair share of mental health crises that cops in 911 could have been called to, and I, I, really doubt I'd be alive here today if the cops had responded to some of those. Let's have a mental health crisis, and when people like me, near the bridge of people especially, we don't get along with cops, these cops don't know how to deal with us, and ICPD does not know how to de-escalate. When I film ICPD, almost every single time I get cops getting mad at me for filming them, they get in my face, they're like threatening to arrest me because I'm filming them. And yet, these people are supposed to be de-escalating situations and responding to mental health crises, and you think that's not going to harm people? Fix that. You know how, you've been told like multiple times by many different people how to change that, but you haven't done anything, time to do something about that.
Thank you. Welcome, Dan.
Hi, so regarding the CPRB, or whatever the acronym is, I'm sorry, Citizens Police Review Board, so this was a board that recently declared that the June 3 tear gassing was justified, and that there was still no misconduct which occurred that night. Anybody who was there that night knows that misconduct occurred. People who were just sitting or kneeling on the ground with their hands in the air were just, were repeatedly shot with rubber bullets, and they were tear gassed. Now, the composition of this current board was to declare that those war crimes justified, right? I don't know if there are any current or former ICPD officers on the department, but I do know that if you added officers from that department, they would be inclined to say, hey, this was justified, because I mean, anybody who's ever seen a cop movie knows that cops don't screw over other cops. I mean, I've heard people who've been on the Iowa City Police Review Board, Citizens Police Review Board, talk about how hard it is, even without the presence of cops, to, to try to impugn police officers, because people just want to let them do whatever they do. And I know that on other boards, former police officers are very much like that. So I mean, it's, this is about the efficacy of the police review board and the process, and frankly, I think that letting any former ICPD officer join the board would taint that efficacy, be them out of the department two years, five years, personally, I think any number of years should disqualify them from reviewing other officers. I mean, we know how it works, and I think if you talk to any former members of the board, they would agree. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome, Taylor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to chime in and also say that you should not have cops on this board, it is a conflict of interest, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Actually, I do have a question. One of the things that I know has been brought up about the need for police presence on the board or a membership is because there's often process that can be explained, and that there is a perspective from having a career in law enforcement, because I do remember also, it's not necessarily that it needs to be a police officer, but someone within law enforcement, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. One of the things that I will admit I've been thinking about though is, is there a need for that police officer, or, sorry, after I just got it clarified, for that law enforcement officer to have a vote? I don't know, and I apologize because I have not seen the minutes, other than having scanned them, so that, that discussion may have already well been had at the commission level. So I just, I want to put that out there, because I do think it's important to have sort of someone who can sort of walk through a certain perspective, given a situation, I think that that can be helpful, but I was wondering about, is there a need for a vote, a voting membership?
Currently, I could tell you the chief of police or designee attends all of the meetings, and so he can provide that perspective, with the exception of the moments in which they adjourn to executive session, then the chief does not go into executive session. I'd want to talk with the city attorney's office and explore that concept of whether somebody could go into that executive session without a vote, I'll see if you have thoughts on that.
Sure, just as you and Kelly, for example, go into executive session with the city council, that person could be invited, invited in, yes. But right now, all members have a vote, so you'd have to, have to have a substantive change to the ordinance to prohibit, if you don't want anybody with any law enforcement experience, because that's currently in the code and has been from the beginning, you'd have to make that amendment, so, but you certainly could.
And I recognize too, that the commission themselves voted on this and agreed unanimously, so I'm not posing that to throw a wrench in the works or to go against what members of the board who are currently on it are saying is simply a point that I don't think that had been raised before, or at least, it was a point of confusion for me.
Well, I'll say that when I first heard that, and I think it was in Corvill, where they were getting their CPRB together, and they wanted law enforcement apart, that was a part of the initial discussion, and I was on the, under the, in the thought process that that was not a good idea. As I began to speak to various people, including the NAACP here in Iowa, I came to the conclusion that, you know, these are the, you know, the CPR review board members, and they're making their request, it could always be changed, I think this council, it is our duty to look at all of it, and so I did get, you know, I am comfortable moving forward with it, I do think that if something should change, the council has every right to come back and redraw how we wrote this.
Certainly. And as a recent former commission member, that was sort of what was guiding my comment about not wanting to go against the commission, I think I may be where you were at, Mr. Mayor, that I find it somewhat problematic, even recognizing that there are one vote of many. That said, I also want to put faith in the commission members, having been on a commission, not the same one, but the notion that we appoint people to carry out in-depth conversations and to really look at different issues that come before them, grants them sort of a body of experience and of knowledge, that I wanted to at least state out here that my hesitation or my question was not to question their judgment per se, because they are in the thick of it, but I did have to say, as someone who is new to this, that the notion of having someone in law enforcement on a board that reviews the police seemed sort of at odds with one another, so I just wanted to sort of say, here's both sides of it for me, and I appreciate the license to process that.
And the council can also waive that requirement at the time of appointment, right? As long as we have, if we agree on that, we don't have to appoint anyone with law enforcement expertise, and it hasn't always been a police officer, I know we had an attorney who had actually, I think prosecuted, police misconduct in the past, had sort of filled that law enforcement spot on the board before.
All right, roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 13 is farmers market insurance, ordinance amending Title 10 of the city code entitled Use of Public Ways and Property, Chapter 11 entitled Farmers Market, to require all vendors to carry insurance, this is first consideration, can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Burgess. Second, Alter.
All right, we'll have Jeff kind of.
Yeah, just briefly, briefly cover this one, so this is being done after just kind of typical reviews of our risk management operations, farmers market operations, we currently only require liability insurance for those that are grilling out on the street during those farmers markets. It's certainly best practice, and what we found to be common in comparable farmers markets, that the vendors also inside the market carry a very common general liability policy. So this would be an ordinance change to require that insurance requirement. Again, some of the cities that have similar requirements here in Iowa, Cedar Rapids, Cedar Falls, Des Moines, Bettendorf, Sioux City, we didn't do a comprehensive review of all cities, but we, we wanted to make sure we weren't asking for something that wasn't standard in other comparable sized markets, so I can try to answer any questions that you, that you have tonight.
Jeff, do you have any idea if most, if most of these vendors carry insurance anyway, and we're just not aware of it? And the second, the second part of my question is, do we think that this is going to push out any smaller vendors?
Well, those are two very good questions, and I think the answer to your first question is probably some of them carry it, because we know we have vendors that might vend, for example, up in Cedar Rapids, so I would say some probably carry it, your larger, more established vendors may do that, depending on where else they vend and what other insurance, you know, they may be pursuing on their own. Would it push things, push folks out? That's certainly not the intended consequence of this action, it's something we'll have to watch closely, and if we do see that we have vendors that can't make payments, we may have to try to explore some, some programs to assist them, whether that's fee waivers on, on the stalls, you know, they're currently making payments to be a vendor, we'll have to look at that a little bit, but, but I think it's a, I think it's a really smart idea to require that insurance, and then figure out if there's unintended consequences, how to mitigate those.
Thanks.
I would think too, a conversation that we had, just kind of explaining who is not covered by this and who would still be exempt, if you could share that with the public.
Yeah, so these are, really looking at the vendors, if you are, well, some of you have campaigned, and you go out to the farmers market, if you have a child that's been a part of the Kids Day market, or you're just out there passing along information, which is very common in our markets, you wouldn't be required, these are, these are the actual vendors that are selling goods on a regular basis at our market.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Public comment, and if you're online, raise your hand, and if you're in person, just come up, welcome.
Hello, my name is Noah, and I share the same concern as you, Janice, about pushing out smaller producers, people, so like, make, if you are going to have the insurance, I don't have, probably they have insurance, but if they are going to have that requirement to have it so it doesn't hurt small producers, people who don't like do it, they just like do it on the side, they're just, like, it's not, so how, so this is you're not pushing out people who, the unintended consequences type thing, like you're saying, to just make sure if you're doing that, to actually include that with there, so, and to do it now, instead of reacting to that, to do more preactive instead of reactive, that's, I honestly don't know exactly what you would do when you were talking, Jeff, but like, so you said, you made it sound like, like, we'll see what's happening, like, once it happens, the problem with that is you're already going to have like the negative effects, and then if you react to that, but you should be proactive with that, and for the insurance, have the insurance, and have the programs already in place, so people aren't discouraged away from it, so you already have it, so it doesn't, you don't have those unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? If online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one. Council discussion?
I just want to say thank you for doing the research of the comparable cities, that was just starting to jot that out as a question, and you answered it in advance, so incredibly helpful for us to sort of see context-wise how common this is, so that, to comments points about being proactive, it's also that this is not some kind of, likely will not become a surprise, that this is going to be introduced potentially for the vendors, and I just echo that, yeah, we sort of keep in mind some of the smaller vendors who may struggle a little bit, that we work to keep them a part of the farmers market here in Iowa City.
I have no doubt that if our staff finds some challenges with individuals, that we will navigate that and make sure that people still have the opportunity to be a part. The one thing I will say, insurance, even though I, none of us like to pay it, I would assume, but it really is for your protection, so if something should happen and someone gets sued, a vendor, then they have some protection and it, you know, potentially won't go into causing them much financial heartbreak, so insurances are there for a reason, and I think this is the right step.
That's a good point, thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Number 14, Downtown SMID Amendment, Ordinance Amending Title III Finance Taxation and Fees, Chapter VII Iowa City Downtown Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District, Section IV Operation Fund of the City Code to Confirm to the Amendments in Iowa Code, Chapter 386 Regarding Multi-Residential Properties. This is first consideration, can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
And I'll invite Jeff back up.
Yeah, just real quick, the intent with this ordinance is to maintain status quo, and the change that's happening that's prompting this ordinance is at the state level, we talked actually quite a bit about it on, on your budget Saturday, we have those multi-residential properties that are being reclassified as residential, as part of that 2013 property tax reform. The downtown SMID collects the SMID tax on the multi-residential properties, but it The state now allows for, form, if you were formerly classified as multi-residential, for you to continue to pay into that Schmid. So this ordinance would allow us to continue to collect those Schmid dollars for the downtown district on those multi-residential properties that soon will be residential. Sorry if that's a little confusing, but again, the intent is to maintain status quo. If you were already paying into the downtown Schmid, you'll continue to. If you weren't, you will continue not to.
Okay. Great. Any questions? No? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one. Council discussion.
I'm just glad it's something they didn't try and take away from us at the same time as they took. The, the change, the, the title, the prop, kind of property.
Yeah. I, I actually agree with this move from the state, so, yep. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15 is Dover Street Traffic Calming. Resolution authorizing the installation of speed bumps on Dover Street between Perry Court and Muscatine Avenue. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Weiner?
Second. Harmsen.
All right, and welcome, Kent.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, Kent Ralston, Transportation Planner. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, the item before you is resolution authorizing the installation of speed humps on Dover Street between Perry Court and Muscatine Avenue. Uh, quickly, by way of background, the residents of Dover Street have successfully completed the city of Iowa City's traffic calming program, uh, based on traffic speeds. Uh, staff discussed traffic calming with the residents of Dover Street at a meeting held back in October, uh, of last year, where the consensus of residents who attended the meeting was to move forward with requests for speed humps and then survey, uh, themselves, essentially. Uh, then about a week later, on October 27th, a survey was sent to residential properties along Dover Street to measure support for the speed humps, and in all 24 households returned, uh, their survey postcards, uh, representing a 61% response rate. And then all of the 24 postcards received by the deadline indicated support for the proposed, uh, speed humps, which obviously represents 100% uh, in favor of that. Uh, note, there were two postcards arrived after the deadline, uh, one was for and one was for, against the proposal. Uh, the other thing I would add is that it's also important to note that prior to engaging with the neighborhood, staff reviews, uh, the speed data and street context with the city engineer, uh, the streets department, and the police and fire departments. And the consensus of the committee was that speed humps were the most safe and effective means for lowering speeds in the neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, does this end up being, it sounded like from one of the letters, one of the emails that we received, that this ends up being used essentially as an escape route for some people who want to, who, who don't want to stay on the main?
Right. So this is a north-south oriented street, for those that aren't familiar, um, and it happens to ultimately connect friendship, uh, down to Muscatine, so it is sort of a cut-through for a lot of folks. Uh, also, Willow Inn School is, is in the same stretch of Dover. So this is the part north of Muscatine, not south. That's correct. Yeah, and that's in my neighborhood, and actually, some of my kids' friends live on that street, so I've driven on that a lot of times. Um, when the Scott Boulevard project was going on, I know the traffic among their street, as well as another street that I live on, really picked up, and so a lot of people were cutting through a lot more. Um, but yeah, no, I think this is a, the, the speed bumps make sense. That's a really busy piece of, with between the Southeast Junior High being a couple blocks away, two elementary schools within a block of that. Um, Dover Street in general, the whole length there is, um, you know, is, is really busy at certain points of the day, so. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. And what's interesting about Dover, if you were to drive down it, it feels like a street that would not have high speeds. It's, uh, not particularly wide, it has parking on both sides. We've sort of done everything we can, uh, at this point, but the speed data does show that there is still a, a problem.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come at this time. Raise your hand online. Seeing no one. Council discussion.
I appreciate the comments we received. We did get some letters, uh, both sides, uh, of this issue, and it, it certainly showed that things can be seen differently by different people. Uh, but I think the, um, game changer for me was the most recent letter, uh, or correspondence that we received, uh, just the other day, uh, from someone who lives on there and has seen, actually seen accidents and, and, uh, watched people who were apparently, uh, exceeding the speed limit, and I think that was kind of a decision-maker for me that, uh, that this is needed.
Have no other comments? Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed at seven to zero. All right. We are on to item number 16, which, which is announcement of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term, April 5th through, uh, April 5th, 2022 through April 6th, 2026. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM on February 22nd, 2022. Item number 17 is announcement of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM, February 8th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals Building Design Professional, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. And vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 18, and we're going to invite USG to speak to us, and welcome back. Classes started.
Thank you. Um, so yeah, that was my first thing that I was going to say, actually. Um, yeah, it's our first day of classes today, and, um, one of our biggest concerns and most, um, apparent concerns at the moment has been the concerning lack of COVID protocols on campus for this semester. Um, UIowa is currently ranking last in Big Ten COVID protection policies, and the city thus must take, help take aggressive action to help address this issue. Um, the, that being said, the Welcome Center at the IMU does provide, or, and student health locations in the IMU, um, and West Lawn, uh, as well as in resident halls, all have COVID, um, uh, test kits available this semester, and students, um, may also consider requesting a free COVID-19 test for pickup or mail delivery, delivery through Test Iowa. There's also a limited supplies of K-95 masks on limited locations on campus. I've been noticing them a lot in, um, like, our Tippi business school and whatnot. Um, but, uh, USG members are also attending, or will be attending, the Association of Big Ten Students at the end of January, uh, to discuss fraternity and sorority life, food insecurity, and mental health and wellness. We are excited to be, um, working to address all these topics with council as well, and are excited to continue that work. We are still seeking feedback on our Homeless Week survey, um, in order to inform, uh, future discussions. Um, a link, uh, will be provided to you all, again, in the email that I will be sending out. Um, and, yeah, that will, that will be all. Um, thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you, and hope you enjoyed your time away, and the rest of the students, and now it's time to get back to work. All right. Item number 19, a city council information and updates, community events, that type stuff.
Um, but the, further to Sam Jarvis earlier, um, if anybody, anybody can go online now, it was launched a day early, and go to the website covidtests.gov and order four rapid COVID tests to be sent to your home for free. Um, so that, that was just launched today. Um, and otherwise, participated and appreciated the city's sponsorship of the MLK events yesterday, heard your, your voice recorded, um, some, some really good events that were pretty COVID-safe, I thought, so.
Following, actually, on your heels about COVID, um, I got an email from the school district that they, um, are doing a vaccination clinic for 12-year-olds and up at Tate on the 23rd, uh, 24th, I'm sorry, and then they're also at Kirkwood Elementary on the 25th. So, for those who are eligible, it just came out today at about 4:30 or so.
I do want to mention, um, as I started out this evening, uh, talking about the life of Dr. King and just that, um, commemoration that, uh, we do annually, and I, I think it's very important for us as a community to continue to do that, um, and happy that it was done in some fashion, um, both, uh, there was a hybrid option for people, so that was great to, uh, still have that available here locally. Uh, I want to remind people that, uh, as you've been hearing, COVID is off the rails a little bit. Um, and I think that, uh, wearing masks, as we know, that's one way that we can do it. Um, I'm tired of it. Everybody here that I know is tired of it, but when you're getting together in family gatherings, um, it might feel a little awkward at first, um, but for me, it's almost like a se, security blanket now, where I just don't, don't really feel comfortable, uh, in close proximity without it. So, I would just encourage people just, um, mask up just a little while longer. We're going to get through this at some point, um, and we are in this together. Any other comments? We're going to go to item number 20, which was reports, report on items from city staff, our city manager.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our deputy city manager.
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
City attorney.
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor.
Filling in, yes. And then our city clerk.
I wish I had some.
How about number 21? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Move by Weiner, second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? We're adjourned.